Let's get started with the environmental commission meeting. First meeting in person in three years, so it's been a long time. Alright, so I think we have a quorum, I'm gonna ask Tania to fill out her own call.
Great. And Tony?
Present.
Mr. Turner?
Present.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lu?
Here.
Commissioner Dennis?
Here.
Commissioner Bryan?
Commissioner Whedon?
Present.
Do you have a quorum? The records show that Commissioner Bryan is absent.
Thank you. So, I don't know if we have any public comments on items on the agenda, I don't know if we have anybody online that could like to make a comment. How do I see that? Am I supposed to see something over there? Ah, there we go. Okay, there he is. Hey Gary.
Hey, good evening everybody. I just wanted you to know there is a member of the public present. Thank you.
No public comment. Alright, good. So, let's move on then if we don't have any public comments. So first, on the agenda, this is the environmental commission minutes from the last meeting, the February meeting. Do we have any questions, edits, comments on the meeting minutes from any of the commissioners?
I'll move acceptance of the minutes.
One second, Dan.
Okay, to pass for minutes as they are, please raise your hand. Hey, what the record show that all commissioners, the environment commissioner, Bryan is absent.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so let's continue on the information and items. First one on the on the agenda is the reach codes and updates, an update on the reach codes on that.
So as you all know, on February 13th, we presented our recommendations based on our findings. Our comment and approval by this commission. The commission approved staff's recommendation with amendments. So staff reviewed and incorporated the commissioners' suggestions as appropriate. And we're gonna be bringing these recommendations to city council on March 28th. And if the council approves the reach codes as submitted, the ordinance will be finalized, staff will submit the application to the CEC, they have a period of review. Then, following approval from the CEC, the reach codes will be filed with the Building Standards Commission and after which they will go into effect. So that's the plan if they're approved on March 28th.
So will they go into effect the day they are approved or the following day, or there is a timeline? How does that work in terms of application of the ordinance once it's voted?
I'm sorry, that the March 28th is the...
Yeah, it has to be reviewed afterwards, that has to be reviewed by the CEC and so on. So it's not, it's not going to go into effect until after it's reviewed, but then as soon as it's approved, it goes into effect, that correct?
After it's approved by the CEC and filed with the Building Standards Commission.
Go ahead, Nora.
So also on that note, then I assume it was definitively decided to go through part six and have it, even though there was question about whether...
Yes, we will do through the part six, the energy code.
So, yeah, a question, I gather that since it's being presented the first time that individuals on this commission will see it when it is, when it's released to the public or for the meeting, in other words, the environmental group nor the subcommittee hasn't seen the the written ordinance or draft ordinance that's being presented, so...
Yeah, I definitely believe that the ordinance will be coming back to the committee. They will present a recommendation and then Nick, Director of Development Services will be writing the ordinance based upon what we provide him of the recommendation.
And my understanding is it hasn't been drafted yet?
I think Nick is working on it right now.
And the final question on that is if, if when that's proposed, I guess the only way then the commissioner would have, provide input on that would be then in public comment as an individual.
I think that's a way to provide your comment, but from my understanding, ordinances don't usually come back to missions? That's policy language?
Well, if the, if the, if the staff wants to present it to council that this has been reviewed by and approved by the commission, you know, that would, you would need that opportunity to bring it to the commission. And so, I guess, the process is, as I see that you're outlining, is it's a staff recommendation, it's not a commission recommendation.
So, I think the intent of our last EC meeting to bring the reach code recommendation to the commission was to finalize those recommendation. So, those recommendations will be incorporated into the ordinance if city council approves them.
So that you're not going to make a recommendation, make a presentation around the recommendations? You're going to present the draft ordinance?
We're gonna make...
March 28th, alright.
We're gonna make a presentation around the recommendations similar to what we presented at the EC.
And the draft ordinance will be attached to the documents that will be submitted for the meeting? So, meaning, just to reiterate things we've been talking about is that in the past, I mean, at least for the last reach code, this commission reviewed the draft ordinance and made final comments on the draft ordinance before it was sent to council. So, this time around, they won't be able to see the draft ordinance that's going to go to council?
That's interesting.
Okay, so, is that, is that a new rule from staff? Or is that specific, is that specific to reach code because of time, I mean, time reasons, or?
I mean, that's a good question. Not sure historically what the rule is around that, but the kind of my understanding is that not standard practice of bringing an ordinance back, are you that do?
Uh, yes. So Director, here, so when it comes to policy items that, so it's gonna go on and approve, then, once the commissioners make the recommendations, then the staff takes it from there and drops the ordinance and gets reviewed by the CEC attorney. But, like Tanya mentioned, your recommendations from the last meeting will be incorporated in there. Yeah, right. So that's, that's the way.
Right. So, following question. On March 28th, do you want the subcommittee to be attending the meeting and be able to answer questions or not?
You usually have one representative at all the meetings, right? I think we have...
We have one person from the commission, but I think we have subcommittee members also that have worked on this for a year almost.
If you're available, that would be great, yes.
And, and would they be able to answer questions from the council, or would they just be attending just to attend? That's a very different kind of dynamic. I'm asking a very specific question.
Yes. So if the council has questions on the recommendations that that subcommittee provided, or, you know, with those amendments, that'd be great if they ask you to speak and then you're there and, yes, thank you.
So, I, well, I understand how they're proceeding. I guess the only comment that I have is, is the staff cannot present the ordinance as the, the environmental commission has approved this because the environmental commission has not seen it. And so, that's a very different thing. We, we approved some concepts and, and made some comments on an outline, if you will, that would go to developing the ordinance. But whether or not that was incorporated according to our intent, or, or if it was, if there was an error or a change or something like that, you have, the staff has to present it that these elements have not been reviewed by the environmental commission nor the subcommittee.
Yes. Well, as the A.S.N. had been mentioned earlier, so she'll be presenting the slides that were presented to the commission and she'll explain, you know, these are, these are the slides that were presented and the commission had some amendments. Committee and commission had amendments to that. Then from there, Director Shores, those recommendations, prepared, ESD prepared the ordinance, got reviewed by the CEC attorney, so all that will be in there. You know, that you have not reviewed the order because it's, it is a policy item that once we make the recommendations, then the role of the, of the commission was completed and then staff took from there. Thank you.
We did provide our recommendation to be very similar to the model code and what was suggested, so I think we're gonna be okay on that front. Yeah.
We don't need to grind this into the ground, alls I'm trying to do is explain that there are differences here in the way that you're proceeding. And, and I don't want anyone here on the commission that may not, has not seen the ordinance and it comes up with something that is not what they understood to be. You know, I want, you know, the commissioners to understand that. And if any commissioner, at least in my opinion, if, if like any citizen, you know, you can make comments on things that come to the city council's council agenda, if you wish.
So the packet will be out, what is it, on Friday for Tuesday council meeting? I guess. One option would be to have a subcommittee meeting between...
Yeah, between that day and the meeting.
Have a subcommittee read of it. You know, kind of more official step, otherwise it will be on an individual reaction.
Well, yeah, if you could meet before the
Fourth Tuesday.
Which is pretty fresh.
So, obviously mine will be on Monday. But as a commission, we can't really meet.
Right, not that, right, just the subcommittee.
So I think would be useful also to clarify, for staff to clarify that as a commission, we've reviewed your recommendations, we've made some amendments to the recommendations at the February meeting of the commission, that the commission hasn't seen the final draft ordinance as presented to the council. I mean, hasn't seen it, hasn't reviewed it because we can see it in the packet, but we have not reviewed it and approved it as such. I think it would be useful for you to clarify this. And then also, I mean, I just, I probably will attend that meeting. Actually, I, yeah, I tried to attend the meeting, but I think it would be useful to, like, at least one of you attending the meeting.
I'm scheduled to be in that meeting anyways.
So, so in that case, I think would be also useful to add that there is, there are representatives representative of the environmental commission on the line or at the meeting that can answer questions in the council as questions. Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Okay, the next item to the reach code is the tree protection ordinance. Do we have any, anything new to report on this?
Just to give you an update, we met with consultants, team division and the planning division, there were separate meetings. And that was really a great chance for them to ask about our processes and, and see where we're at and assess challenges. So, they should be finishing their work in the next couple of weeks. And so, once they write their deliverables, we can enhance our recommendations that we made to the subcommittee. And then, we'll be bringing those back to the subcommittee before we bring, bring it to council.
Okay, so, what kind of timelines are we looking at there? So, in terms of going to the subcommittee, I mean, like, like, is it going back to the commission next month? Two months from now or three months from now, what's, what's your expectation?
I think we're aiming for end of April, beginning of May, to go into the subcommittee, but...
Okay, so probably your June, June EC meeting would be
Eventually.
May, May or June?
Yeah. Any other questions?
See any questions or comments? Actually, one thing that I forgot to do is to ask if there are any comments on members of the public, public on the reach code.
I think on the informational items, you don't have to, somebody can correct me.
Yeah, I don't know. Can we clarify?
Sorry, can you see that?
Do we need to ask for public comments on the informational items?
Yes. So, um, just questions.
So, I forgot to ask about the reach code, so we should do it, the reach codes first, then we'll do it one by one. As the questions are over. So do we have any public comment about the reach codes?
I'm ready, answering.
Any more questions about the model, oh, sorry, any more questions about the tree protection ordinance? Any public comment? I don't see any, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure where to look for it. I don't know. Gary is, it's okay.
So, when it comes to trees, I always have a public comment. Now, this, this past weekend, you can see the kids behind me, that's from the green team at the high school. We planted a bunch of trees, and so we're up to number 377. And my goal really is to, and I think it's realistic, is to hit number 400 on Arbor Day. And then I, what I wanna do is invite the mayors from Los Alamos and Los Alamos Hills to help me plant a tree. So, I'm just giving you an update, that's all.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't start the video, did I? There, there they are.
That's good.
And the two dogs.
Great job.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving on to the model ordinance for the water concern, water efficiency.
Yeah, so for M window, we still have not received the model ordinance from the consultant, Green Evolution. They did give us a timeframe last time we checked in around March, so we hope to see that soon. So we'll just continue doing peer jurisdiction research and other review that will provide, bringing these these reach codes to other departments. And then, hopefully we'll get the ordinance soon so that we can start developing some recommendations for that.
Okay, so, again, process wise, I'm guessing as soon as you have revised model ordinance, you can have a discussion internally and then go to the subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
And then, go to the commission.
For permission.
Questions, you all?
So as part of the review right now, are you starting to think about which measures of the old model reach code or the existing model reach code that are likely to be included in, in any proposal? Like, seems like there could be some progress and work being done while waiting for the updated.
Yeah, yeah, we already outlined all the measures and then assessed our initial review of whether they're achievable or other just other things that we may immediately see. And we've added that into a spreadsheet and we had an initial meeting with development services, but they really want to see that updated ordinance. So yes, the answer is yes, we have been looking at what was already presented, the measures that were already in the model ordinance and we've outlined them. And we're just ready to, they're going running when we do get that updated version. So we can just see what the changes are and update our spreadsheet.
Is that something that could be shared with the subcommittee?
Did we share the spreadsheet with the committee?
That's where she contains the M window measures. Oh, well, to get to the point where, you know, where you're to the point where, you know, since that means we're sharing.
Oh, yeah, we can, we'll share that with you after we get the updated ordinance.
I have a general question. And I don't have a whole lot of specific knowledge on this ordinance, but my understanding is that it generally deals with larger developments. In other words, a single family home that's a scrape and rebuild or a lots subdivision to two lots is not gonna impact, at least my rudimentary understanding, it's really not gonna impact. So my, it's sort of a lead into my question is, is do we, do you generally know how much this is gonna impact the city of Los Altos and what type of developments it's gonna have an impact on?
Um, that's a good question. I don't think we've gotten there yet, but we will definitely take that into account.
Because, you know, I'm thinking, you know, we're a built out city, you know, the, the only place that I can, you know, I, I can't see a subdivision of more than a couple of homes, you know, going in. I could see multifamily developments that could be potentially impacted. But I guess the question is, is, you know, hasn't even been looked at the previous model or knowing where the, the remod, the new model or the revised model is headed, is how much impact is it gonna have on the city of Los Altos?
My recollection was there were certainly single family home relevant.
There were some?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's about the plumbing, right, the flow rate, the gallon. I think, you know, all the, especially the new constructions or maybe even remodel.
There were some dual plumbing requirements and then, but there are also things like swimming pool covers and landscape, so certainly application.
There's a lot of looking. I'm sure you mentioned those, those wall covers. But I think it's those, those higher hanging through that we need to really dive into and that's the facts and all that, you know.
Thank you. Any more questions? Why we have to wait till we see the model ordinance? One question would be, do we align our Los Altos ordinance to the reach code ordinance, which include remodels? It's not included in the model ordinance? That's gonna be a really little big question, I think. So we'll have to see what, what they come up with. Any other questions about that? Comments? Do we have any public comment on the model water efficiency, new development ordinance? No? Okay. Alright. Next agenda item, other web plan items, so so one, reach codes, two, tree preservation, water conservation. Next one was the environmental webpage on the city website. We had some discussions about that last time, specifically making it easier for people to access it. Have you had any discussions internally about that, adding maybe a link on the Los Altos webpage? When people log on, when, open the page? I know that's one of the things we talked about. The other thing we talked about is making a public comment. I need to make a public comment during your council meeting, so that's, that's what I'm supposed to do, but I'd try to do one in March, either tomorrow I come, but maybe another council meeting, try to do that in March for sure. What about, you know, something on the Los Altos webpage, the main page?
On the main page?
Yeah, so, you know, if you go on the main page, you have tiles at the bottom of the page or in the middle of the page with summer base, these tiles are summer base. When you click the tiles, you can go onto something specific, maybe that could be one new tile that we put in there? As a possibility. I don't know if you have any other suggestions?
I haven't looked since our last meeting, but last time I tried it, there were different different reach code links from different page goes to different thing. One reach code link goes to our current ordinance and then there was one, some that go to the information page. So, last time I looked at it, there were some, you know, confusing navigation. I haven't gone back to check if that's been unified.
Not specifically to the reach codes, not specifically to that page.
Right, but one, I think one of the reach code links went to the energy page.
The energy page. Yeah, I was thinking about the energy, a link to the energy page on the main Los Altos page. That's what I was thinking about.
Was included in the city manager, one of the city managers.
Yeah, it was in the weekly updates, like, yeah, beginning of February. Anyway, maybe, maybe you can take that as an action item and then have discussions internally, see if there is anything that can be done to make it easier for people to access it. Because even though we've, we're trying to communicate about it and we're gonna have to communicate about it during the affair, I'm assuming at the table. But I think for people to have something when they, you know, when you look for something, it's not easy to find it. You have to know, go to the environmental commission page and then you need to know how, go to the energy tab and so on. So, anything that could make it easier for people to access that energy tab and then maybe fixing the reach codes issues that Nora is talking about. And we're gonna have your reach codes hopefully soon, so maybe it's gonna be a good time to update the reach codes piece also.
Yeah, I think. Are you referencing the building code? Um, are you referencing the building code or the building?
I have to go back and look where I, where it's linked from, but um, yeah, it comes to, to, and I would think we would want the energy page to be also linked on the reach code page, right? If people are looking at that thing.
Yeah, I think we're gonna update the reach code, or we will update the reach code page once uh they're finalized and we can definitely add the link there um to the energy page. Um, and then we can touch base with uh the building department on the updates. I think they're still in the process of doing their updates to their departmental page or their division page. And then as far as adding it to the city main website, we will touch base with the communications team, see what to do there.
I think we have done that um for the last reach codes, I think there was a tile about the reach code that linked directly to the reach codes, if I remember well. I think um it doesn't last forever. You can have it there for like two or three months maybe and then obviously it goes off and then there are some updates that you can't have times forever, I think, but that's one option. I'm just suggesting that because it's already there, you're not gonna create something new. I mean, some of the ways of doing it.
Do you happen to have an example of what it would be?
I remember, oh, maybe the cap, no, it's the cap. I think the cap was on one of the tiles on the main city webpage. Or if, I don't know how long exactly, but um, so when the cap was approved in March two thousand twenty-two, I believe, there was a direct link to the cap on the main city webpage for, I don't remember how long, I think that was the cap, for the cap we had that. Yeah, so I think the idea is would be for anything that's kind of new, whether it's the reach codes, whether it's the the energy page, maybe we can have a link to that particular page directly from the main page of the Los Altos uh dot gov. And then it can be, I don't know what the policy would be, it could be there for like three months, seems reasonable, could be less, could be more, it's just, I don't know what's So maybe you can update us on what you find out uh at the next meeting or the meeting after next, whenever you guys are ready.
Check in on that.
Will you take some public comment on that one, Bruno?
You can, I can take a public comment on that one.
So, we're gonna have summer interns again this year. We we really like that program. And one of the uh projects that we'll have uh one or two working on would be trying to understand everything there is to know about electrifying your home. Hot water heat pumps, furnaces, whatever. And so we would be looking at the city's website and we could offer you some critique on that. We wanna gather all the information about the rebates and the incentives that are available, but look at S P C E. And just get all this together, maybe do a presentation to you or more likely, just go to the library, try to get the word out and make, make it as easy as possible for people to understand what they need to do to 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 do this, to to electrify things. So just FYI, that would be one of our projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, and and again, any feedback we can get from the public um in general on the page would be useful for us to, you know, it's a living document in a way, so we're gonna have to update it as new information is available and your rules are set by the state according to the I R A, which is not, we don't, we're not clear yet on what's gonna, the state is going to do. So we'll have to, you know, update on a regular basis, I think. So any comments um on that page would help us improve it. All right. E V fail.
We have a meeting tomorrow. I have to really give you, I mean, discussions about uh promotional, uh where we put banners and such, but not really um something we have to discuss here, so. Um, I think it'd be good to set time for the next meeting to talk about what we want to be at our booth. And so many of us agree to work on that, so. If anybody wants to shoot off now, that would, that would
Is there a potential that maybe uh you can report through our liaison, something of what occurs on that to to basically inform or bring the commission up to speed, then they can distribute it to the commissioners?
Yeah, I think part of it's just the timing of, with them being like so far, it's just so close to these meetings, it's a month out from then, so it's only, it might become outdated, that information from the meeting we have tomorrow, but next month, but yeah.
Just so, you know, because obviously it's of interest, we would not wanna help how we can, but somehow the information has to come back to the commissioners and if it can be routed through staff on, you know, summary of the meeting or whatever, uh that might be helpful.
You take notes during it and update, so um and certainly a resource for that. It's, but it's a lot of stuff like trying to figure out which vehicles will come and the layout of the booth versus that and where the volunteer stands up.
Big picture, no?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have you made any formal requests to the commissioners about uh being at the the table, the E C table?
That's what we did last, last meeting.
Is the time uh of the event set and can you remind us?
That is set ten to two.
So um can, would you be ready to make a formal presentation next month or would that be too early?
Uh, you know, I wouldn't feel like we need to have uh all vehicles and booths secured and firm necessarily make proper presentation, but uh trying to think what's gonna, what would be the most beneficial um.
Well, you can, you can decide and then, and then talk to Tanya or Casey about that when you think it's makes sense for whether it's the April meeting or the May meeting, May meeting would be at least two or three weeks before the
Yeah. I personally don't think there's anything worth uh presenting at this moment. I'm not telling you, Casey, have any, have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I would concur with that. Stated, there's just kind of figuring out the specific logistics at this point, um but the big picture, you know, we have the date set, we have the time, um and the main draw is the the meet and greet component. And getting a variety of E Vs out there and um having E V owners who are informed and um willing to to share their knowledge, that's the, that's the biggest draw and yeah, I'm trying to think of other big picture. Uh, do you have any specific questions?
Well, I think to me, I think the key is gonna be whatever marketing campaign you have around the E V fair, because, you know, we want to draw as big of a crowd as we can, right? So would be, and I don't know if that's something you guys would like input from the commission or that, or, you know, I I just right now, we we kind of, kind of an idea of what you guys are doing. We don't necessarily know the details of it. Maybe we don't need to know the details of it, I don't know, but, no.
I'm just saying in terms of, you know, help that the commission can provide, um one thing to do would be if you have certain vehicles you're looking for that you don't, you haven't found willing drivers or owners to come, you could send out, we're looking for a, you know, whatever you might be looking for. Um, and and then we could respond and let you know, have you tried this person? And I would also note, uh you know that uh Icaria has the E V ambassador program, which has a lot of drivers that are knowledgeable and willing to bring their vehicles there, so.
Yeah, we, that's what we're utilizing, okay, yeah. You're just kind of leading that.
Okay.
She's done this multiple times, so.
If there are gaps, you know, maybe that's something you can send.
Any public comment on the E V fair? Gary? All right, unless there is someone else, um any other public comment? All right. Okay. All right, so we're going to skip the single use plastic discussions for after.
Can we talk about other work plan items, even if the uh
Yeah, go ahead.
Tomorrow, the commission is discussing the gas power, the lower enforcement. Um, just informational item, so there is information in the packet about the proposed changes in enforcement to the gas power, we've lower ban, so if commissioners are interested, wanna provide public comments in support of that, um this is, you know, uh something that the um members of Greentown have been working on. Or coordinates.
Is the information came from Greentown, for, for the council?
Um, I wouldn't say, no, I mean, it's a staff report, so it's, yeah, the staff has, has, you know, worked on the recommendation, but it is something that um Greentown, you know, initially brought to the forefront, but
Yeah.
So it's just
My comment on this is, um so a few months back, we made, I think in October or September, we made a recommendation to support, but Greentown was doing in terms of changes to the enforcement of that ban to include homeowners. Um, is Greentown putting that in the public comment? How is that, how is that going to be presented to the council? And I, I haven't looked at the packet yet, so I don't know what's in the staff recommendation, no.
Yeah, so the staff recommendation is obviously what's in the packet. Greentown will, members of that, you know, task force committee, whatever you call are, are, you know, providing their own support of, yes, making homeowners um uh also part of the enforcement action and then um allowing for fines to be brought with first, you know, on the first incident of um violation, so yes, those are all part of the recommendation and I'm assuming, and I know that, that, you know, the, and her group have been supporting that.
Any other, the other work plan item? Uh, the greening city operation, we had discussions about this and specifically during an audit of city buildings. I know that's not something that's happening right now, so we're going to table that for the moment until, you know, we can have, you know, people working on it. I think, but we have talked about that before, right? So you have to date on what we, what started and then it's cold right now. Okay? So we're done with the other work plan items, um and then we're going to go into a discussion item which has to do with uh what's going to the council tomorrow, which is not a single use plastic ordinance, but something that's in line with A B twelve seventy-six. You want to uh give us an update, Tanya, please?
Yeah, so just gonna kind of go over this just to make sure we're, we're all aware of what A B terms looks is, but um it regulates the distribution of single use foodware accessories and condiments to consumers. Um, it doesn't ban them or prohibit them. And uh it additionally restricts these items of being bundled, so uh they can be out at the I think it's uh Redberry Cafe has some out in, in their um lobby for, for customers to grab, so that, that's okay. But they can't bundle them so that so it's all on request. There's some other uh requirements listed into the law. But I think the main difference is that it's not a, it's not a ban. It's, they still can be provided if the customer requests it. Um, and then um it's in addition to the plastic straw law. It's the foodware accessories does include um straws in this, this A B twelve seventy-six law. But um the plastic straw law is for full service food establishments. Which is also upon request and um so in order for us to be compliant, in compliance, we'll be asking the city council to um we'll be introducing its ordinance to city council uh tomorrow and then asking them to adopt on March, March twenty eighth. Um, and um so I guess the question that the miss, uh Chair Delaney proposed is discussing a single use plastics ordinance, which could ban single use plastics in Los Altos, which would be an additional, different ordinance.
Right, so, I mean, I, I don't know if you agree with A B twelve seventy-six, but I mean, it's pretty much what Tanya said, it's, it's regulates the, the use of single use ware accessories, so it doesn't include everything, it's just accessories, so fork, knives, lids, condiments, stirrers, straws and so on, and it doesn't ban it, so you can still give away or give out plastic forks, plastics knife, plastic whatever, uh as long as it's requested by the customer. So that's the only thing that A B twelve seventy-six, it doesn't address single, uh it doesn't address foodware, it just addresses foodware accessories. And it's not a ban, it's just a regulation, so um that's, and that, my understanding is that that's what's going to council tomorrow. It's just an ordinance for Los Altos, which would comply with A B twelve seventy-six. It's not a, a complete ordinance like we had worked on in the past and that was put on hold in October two thousand twenty-one because of COVID. Okay, so um, so I wanted to have a discussion at this commission meeting prior to the council meeting tomorrow, so that we as a commission can have a discussion around what we would like to see in Los Altos, whether it happens, obviously probably not tomorrow, but in the near future.
I mean, so we did have a subcommittee working on this. Um, and
When was that being worked on?
Well, so right, it was, we had drafted a proposed ordinance, then COVID hit and we stopped and then it came back, um back to the table and we had a proposal early twenty-two, right, I think, that decided at that point again not to move forward at that point and then we just met
One subcommittee meeting since the end of no twenty-two to talk about that. The fact of the matter is, so just to complete on A B twelve seventy-six, was passed a few years back. And um local governments, including cities, had to comply by June two thousand twenty-two, right? So I had to put in place an ordinance to enforce what is said in A B twelve seventy-six, which wasn't the case, wasn't done in Los Altos. Some of the cities have done it. Los Altos hasn't done it, so I'm not sure what it means not to have passed it by June two thousand twenty-two in accordance to the law as voted back then. Um, but the fact of the matter is that now it's going to council as an ordinance to comply with A B twelve seventy-six period.
So is, is your question whether we somehow want to make some sort of statement that we as a commission feel that we need to go beyond what, what this is just doing, which is complying with the law and we would like to suggest that this is not in fulfillment of what the original intent of the subcommittee and previous of what the original intent of the subcommittee and previous versions of our work would fulfill and that, okay, now we have, we're complying with the law, but we would recommend to the council that, or whatever word you want to say, we hope that we continue to develop a single-use plastic ordinance that is more comprehensive for Los Altos, is that what you're kind of?
That's kind of the idea. I wanted to have a discussion since it's just before the meeting, so that we as a commission come up with some kind of recommendation, whether AB 1276 and being in compliance with AB 1276 is enough, or whether we as a commission would like to go way beyond or way beyond 1276. So that means two, that means several things. One is AB 1276 doesn't include foodware. If that's something that we should consider in Los Altos. AB 1276 doesn't ban the use of plastic items where the foodware or foodware accessories just regulates the use of those items. So do we want to ban completely the use of plastics for foodware and foodware accessories?
I think that discussion is a very, like, that's what we were, discussion we were having in the subcommittee, right? The proposal that was up in 2021 was foodware accessory based. Or only around foodware accessories and what, you know, a plastic alternative we would, that. I don't know that we can decide, I wouldn't think that we can decide tonight what we would recommend as, you know, what that single-use plastic ordinance.
We don't be specific, I think, tonight.
But I think, I mean, I personally think, you know, being, having been on the subcommittee, I would say we were going towards, the idea was after we decided to, you know, again, to delay, that we wanted to include more than foodware accessories. So yes, it would be a broader scope, and then, yes, we need to, you know, delineate what plastic alternatives would be acceptable, right? Would it only be fiber-based, what, or would it be compostable? So I think that broad, for me, my understanding, the broad scope would be beyond accessories, so broader scope foodware, and yes, either, either plant-based, fiber-based, or perhaps compostable.
My impression is that will the business have a hard time secreting the supply? You know, have we, are we aware of that? Because if we have a very strict ordinance in place that can draw some of the feedback is that, you know, we, we don't know if that will create difficulty in terms of them obtaining those compostable items. You know, I think people are going to ask is that, you know, why, why do we need to be so strict? I feel step by step being, it makes sense. You know, first, if we can comply with this AB 1276, and then I think we should, as a next step, is that, you know, if we, if you want to cover all the accessory, you know, including all the utensils and stuff like that, I think we should probably take some time, have some understanding, the supplier for those and the cost that would be involved, obviously, that's going to be added to whatever, when they sell you the food, they have to add up those costs, yes.
So that's part of the work we had started to do. That was certainly the consideration when it was, you know, during COVID, there was so much stress on probably. So that was, that was a huge consideration. We did at the time do a little bit of outreach to local businesses, restaurants to see what was available, what the costs were. I, again, got back in touch with the chamber, thinking that we, and they're happy to do a survey of their members and get information about what they have available, what are their costs, all that kind of information. And that's why I'm saying I can't answer right now what the specifics would be, because those are all considerations about what is available and what is cost-effective for business for alternatives.
Yeah, it seems to me, like, that background is very helpful, but it seems to me like, at least, for me, I wouldn't be prepared to make any recommendation to anybody right now, but I don't know the details. But certainly, I think we could say we support AB. Yeah, yeah, and that maybe we say we support going beyond that and we will restart the subcommittee and I bet we could come back with a hard recommendation, how far we go beyond that. I don't know.
I think it has also to do with, certainly, I think, as a commission, at least it's clear to me that, that we have to comply with the law, that's 1276, and that we have an interest in advancing it to compostable beyond just accessories into, in the, the plates, cups, so on and so forth. And we've been doing some work on that, and it's in the subcommittee, which has an interest in that, has been working with staff a little bit, and then at the appropriate time, we'll continue that work with staff when they feel it's appropriate to start putting it together to bring forward in more detail to the commission and to the council.
Yeah, I think, I think the point is not to come up with details and specifics about how we're going to do it, because a lot of work needs to take place. We need to reach out to businesses, we need to understand what they're doing, we need to understand what's acceptable, what kind of timelines we're looking at. There is a lot of work that has been done in the past, not just by the subcommittee and the city in general, but there is a Santa Clara County Model Ordinance that actually addresses accessories, but also foodware, and also the idea of not using plastics anymore, but using products that are compostable according to the local, you know, we have different suppliers in terms of waste disposal, so it has to comply with the local emission trend in particular for us. But that's kind of what we were following as a subcommittee, is to follow that, that, that Model Ordinance and then try to go beyond just AB 1276. I just want to make sure that there is a clear understanding in general that as a commission, but it's a question mark, I'm asking the commission to decide, you know, whether 1276 is enough and then we're done, you know, because that's an option. Comply with 1276, we go, or we go beyond that, and obviously, we do something that's comprehensive, includes not just accessories, but includes also all foodware, plastic cups, containers, so on. And also bans the use of plastics when single-use items are requested by the customer. In other words, instead of using plastic, businesses would have to supply compostable items. Or recyclable items, that would be, that's another option, that's actually in the order. But I think compostable item personally would be my preference, because recyclable, recycling plastics right now is not easy and it's not, it's very, it's not well done. So I think, you know, recyclable plastic is is not something that's a guarantee for plastics being recycled. So that's the kind of discussion I wanted to have today, so that as a commission, we don't recommend anything, anything specific, but we, in compliance, which actually one of the actions that's in the cap, we want to move beyond AB 1276 enforcement and put together comprehensive ordinance that addresses not just accessories, but also foodware in general, and bans the use of plastics when these items are requested by customers, kind of what I've been thinking about.
We want to reach single-use plastic ordinance.
I think that's, I think that that, if you're looking for something that says, yes, we reaffirm our, our cap goal and 3.1B, you know, to continue work and advancement at the appropriate time of single-use plastic ordinance, that's correct, and I, I think, at least as a commissioner, I'm in favor of that type of statement that, that compliance with the law is, is 12B 76, but 12B 76 isn't the intent of what was in our cap.
And, and, you know, that's what.
Our cap intended more than.
And I think the question that is going to be posed also indirectly also is, what do we do? And that could be, it was in our work plan actually this year, but it was not addressed because of different staff priorities, but I think it could become a priority for us this year to really work on that and have something by the end of the year. But that's not something we have decided today, this is something we can discuss during the work. Discussion. So. Can I suggest we make a motion around that? Are you guys comfortable with it?
So would this be included? And how is this going to be used? I'm just wondering what the purpose of it is.
Make sure we have an official position from the commission around that. I just, I just want to make sure this, it's not because we went to be in compliance with AB 1276 that our work is done as, no, just not as a commission, but, you know, as a city in general. Because it could be, you know, we're done, let's forget about it, and then five years from now.
I don't, yeah, that was never, I understood, so I'm happy to reaffirm that.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if we really need an ordinance, all right, it's a resolution. I'm not sure we really need that, I think we just need, well, you're the chair, I wish, but.
If it's useful, sure.
Yeah, I think it would be useful, but that's a personal opinion.
No, no, I think would be, I think the timing is right, if they're voting on that, or implementing that at the council, then we should just make a statement, we still support our cap and the goals in the cap, as a reminder of this. I don't, I don't need to know the cap exact, what the cap says about single-use plastics, but I imagine.
This is pretty much what we were working on, really, which is what.
Yeah, then, then I think we should just think we, we support the cap and we will get to work on defining that for the council.
I signed up to attend tomorrow's meeting, so are we wanting to agree that I would say a certain statement about this at tomorrow's meeting?
That's one option, we can have to do a motion today, that's not something we feel comfortable about doing and we don't think it's necessary to do. Another option would be to have a statement made at the meeting when this item is going to be discussed by one of the members of the commission on behalf of the commission. Or, or we don't do it, I mean, we can always leave it and say, you know, we'll address that later in the work plan, we don't have to say anything. I think my intent, and it's just my intent, and you guys need to agree with that, was because it's going to be discussed tomorrow, I wanted to make it clear to the council that the commission thinks AB 1276 is one step, and it's important because you're in compliance with the law, but with the commission would like to move forward with an ordinance that's comprehensive, that includes accessories, includes foodware, and ban the use of single-use plastics when these items are requested by the customer, by any customer. So it goes way beyond AB 1276, and actually, you know, there is a Santa Clara County Model Ordinance, which pretty much addresses, addresses all this.
If the current ordinance in our city is already complying with the AB 1276.
We can talk about it tomorrow. There is no ordinance right now that complies.
That's why I was saying earlier, I think the first step is that we need to amend our ordinance in order to apply what AB 1276 requires us to do. That would be our first step, I think. Nobody is going to help, have any opposition to that, yes, but the next step would be what you were just saying, you know, we want more comprehensive, obviously, I think that takes a little bit more work, right? We don't want to antagonize our business community on this without getting some input and, you know, as you know, the county has a lot of data on these compostable supplier and, you know, they may also have some cost analysis done, and I think, I think we can propose is that we're going to get all the supporting data to move forward our climate action plan 31.1B to ban because of the consideration of recycled, recycled plastics simply is not optimal right now and it's going to be a very long shot at a goal to achieve, so we wanted to move further. And I feel that would be convincing to people, right? I mean, our first step is to amend our ordinance to comply with the current current law, then that would be our second step.
The idea.
Would anyone like me to read what the caption?
Can you just name a section, we can look it up after?
Not the whole cap.
You already listed that, it's short, yeah. It's adopt a new ordinance to eliminate non-essential single-use plastics and prioritize reusable foodware and utensils. Ensure all new single-use foodware and utensils are compostable per guidelines from the franchise waste dollar.
I have, I have no objection along the lines that you said, if you want, we authorize our representative at that meeting to, and to say, we're supportive of the 12B 76, want you to be aware that this, this is sort of a first step in what is part of the cap, which is this other section that's, that we're looking forward to beginning work on at the appropriate time.
Before we start the work on.
Start, continue, maybe it better be, continue work on.
Yeah, I mean, and Carl can literally reiterate, read back what he just read.
In your own words. I mean, wait, you, I mean, it's pretty good, I think.
Just, just remind them what the cap says about it, that's our, that's our intent.
It's just to remind them that. Keep moving.
So as a commission, are we comfortable having the commission, commission's position being represented by Carl at the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't need to take a formal vote, I think it's just a general agreement. Are you comfortable with that, Carl? Yeah? Then I leave that with you. That the Santa Clara County Model Ordinance. All right, do we have any comments from the public on this particular item, single-use plastics ordinance, AB 1276?
No.
Thank you, public. All right. Good. Next item is city staff updates.
The first point is a compost giveaway going to be held on April 21st, 2023. It is changing a little bit. Due to lack of city resources, we're planning a self-serve compost event. Previously, there was some bags that were packed and distributed to residents and so it'll be more of a self-serve compost event. And then we'll be posting that information later week, hopefully, with all the details, and it's going to be appointment required and, per usual, Los Altos residents on April 21st. And then there's also a household hazardous waste event that's coming up on April 15th here in Los Altos. Appointments will also need to be made with the county of Santa Clara. And location can not be at this time, but residents can contact the county Santa Clara for questions, they put that on, but it'll be hosted in Los Altos, so it travels, that event travels from different cities, and it's in Los Altos on April 15th.
That's going to be advertised on the website, huh?
Yeah, we're going to advertise it in the town inquiry and hopefully the city manager's update. I believe that's what we're looking at right now.
Just want to clarify about the Santa Clara event that hosted in Los Altos, so Santa Clara is driving it. Counters, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, right. Do you show updates?
One more update. Um, we just wanted to share with you all that um in November, staff applied for a grant. The S V C E demonstration, uh decarbonization demonstration grant. And we were we're happy to share that we were awarded it. Um, so we'll be working on a uh what I think is a pretty cool project. Uh, but and we're going to be bringing it to city council March twenty eighth. And uh so we can't share details of the project just yet, uh but more to come on that.
So it's going to be that grant is going to be used for what? I don't know. You don't want to be specific, but it.
It's for the it's going to be a decarb demonstration.
Decar- demonstration.
Decarbonization demonstration.
Question about that. Is that different than the planning grant? That S V C, because this is this you applied and and were awarded through S V C. So it's different than the the dedicated funds that were given to each member agency that were to be used for some sort of um resiliency project that. Is there any update on what that money is being used for, the planning grant money?
Sure. Any?
There's a hundred fifty thousand. That was uh just it was just given the like each city got, you know, whatever X amount percentage of uh whatever, you know, their their share of um value in energy was. And I think ours was a hundred thousand for, you know, whatever project we determined to use it for. And um I never heard that then would then result of using that money.
I'm yeah, I'm still looking into that. Yeah, uh, we're getting ready.
Jim was on. That that was that was it.
Thank you. Commissioners reports and comments is the next agenda item. Who who was attending the so I was attending the twenty February twenty first meeting.
And I attended the February twenty eighth.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, so I think we can go with that maybe.
Um, so the most relevant um discussion at the uh twenty fourteenth mission meeting was council was discussing the commission appointment process and potential changes to that. So um you know, I I don't think we need super in-depth, but uh you know, but but that was being discussed. And then I don't know if you're going to cover the commission.
Good question.
Internal commission.
I talked about that.
Okay, all right.
So there's there was discussion around the process, but no formal position taken from the council meeting, the process to appoint commissioners.
Right, that was that was my understanding that's going to come back, I believe, but it was around, you know. How how many times they do commission interviews then.
Okay, so regarding the twenty first February meeting. So it was actually the council retreat meeting, was not a formal council meeting. A lot of a lot was discussed at that meeting. Um, the priorities for the council were discussed. So they reviewed the priorities from last year. I believe there were nine priorities that were reviewed. They decided to focus on only six. I think six is the final number. That correct? Five or six. Priorities with, you know, and several priorities were um deemed unnecessary because it's something that's done by the council on a regular basis. Like the anything that has to do with finances, for example, or so on. Uh, two points to mention. One is the sustainability priority was uh kept and was reinforced to include the cap as something specific implementation of the cap, which I think was very positive. Regarding housing and planning, um there was also um more specific wording around it. And specifically as as with regards to us. Um, changes were made to make sure that any new buildings, specifically multifamily housing, are equitable and sustainable. Which was not specific before that. So that was added also to the council priorities, which I think it's important for the commission to to know. Um, I don't remember, I didn't take my notes. I'm sorry about that. But I don't remember exactly which were the five or six priorities, but there was that housing and planning. There was sustainability, and there were a few others. There was the complete street, the complete street um plan also, which was one of the priorities. Um, anyway, there was some other ones that not necessarily related directly to us. So that was one one part of the the discussion around the council retreat. Then there was a discussion around the commission and objectives. Um, so there were things that were brought by staff with regards to the commission work. Um, and um one was the recognition that Los Altos has more commissions than most cities around us. And Don, I know you were attending that meeting also. Shime in also if you if you want to add anything. Um, so one proposal from staff was to reduce the number of commissions. We have right now, we have eleven commissions in Los Altos. So the proposal, one of the proposals was to reduce the number of commissions, maybe merge commissions together. Um, because obviously every single commission has a liaison and every single commission needs more staff work. So I think that's what potentially would be driving this. Um. So there was no discussion with specific to us as a environmental commission. There was no discussion of us the you know, eliminated or being merged with another commission that I think uh there was no uh real discussion about that. And from what I heard, there is no real push for something like that to happen, whether at the council level, whether the staff. Um. But there were discussions also in addition to that regarding the frequency of meeting. Most commissions meet on a monthly basis, except for the planning commission. They meet on a bi-weekly basis. Um, and I think some commissions, maybe the the youth commission of the um the the senior commission, I think, can meet on a quarterly basis, I think. But most commissions hit on a monthly basis. And, you know, one of the proposals was was to reduce the frequency of the meetings on the commissions. Um. So that's what another thing that was discussed with no action was taken, and I'll come back to that afterwards. Um, another point that was made is a proposal to have a top-down approach towards the commission. Rather than the bottom-down approach, bottom-up approach, or a combination of both. So the idea was to say the council sets the work of the commission based on the budget, needs to be aligned with the budget. Therefore, it should be a top-down um management of the commission. So that was another another thing that was brought um brought up to the council as a potential item for review as they try to harmonize the commission and then reduce the number of commission and harmonize the frequency of the meeting. Um, another item that was discussed is the duties um and the power of the commissions. So some some commissions, not many, I think it's only a couple of commissions, have their duties and powers specifically um discussed in um is that in the work book, the commission's work book, or is that in uh? You remember that? I think it was the commission work book, right? Or is that or is that in the C D C D code in general?
I think that there's some of the commissions are um their their duties are just prescribed in the code, I believe, like the planning commission and a couple others. But so they were pointing out that there's this spectrum of how different commissions operate and whether or not how they how they should address it to to be uniform or to be uh consistent on how they work with staff.
Yeah, most commissions actually right now, except for the planning commission, there is also the design review commission. Um, as an example, have their duties and power defining the Los Altos city code? But a commission like the environmental commission and most, at least four or five of the commissions, there is no specific power or duties defined in the code. The only duty is to advise the council on environmental related issues. Uh, but there is nothing more specific than that. So there was a discussion about should we specify the role of each commission and put it in the code so that everybody knows what the commission is supposed to do. So that's another discussion that took place. Um, another one was about the work plan, right? So as I mentioned before, you know, the work plan sometimes is not completely aligned to the budget that is set by the council. So there is a need, there was a need to align the work plan of the commission with the budget or the budget with the work plan. It's kind of like the um so there was an also another discussion around that as well. Um. And I think that's about it. Um. Yeah, so I think that's that was was discussed at the council. So um there was a lot of discussion around all these items, but no action taken. The only action that was taken was that the council asked the city manager to talk to the chairs and potentially advise chairs of the commissions to get feedback on all of those items. So right now, we're waiting to hear from uh city manager that either or else is going to be coordinating a meeting between the chair and the city manager, right, to talk about all these issues.
So after the election tonight, um the new chair will be contacted or our liaison is going to schedule a meeting. And right now, the the time the time available for the first uh for post time here for Thursday the twenty third at ten AM, the virtual meeting will be the liaison's um city manager, um the chair and the director, and that's going to be for all the decisions.
Yeah, there will be one meeting per commission, right?
Exactly, because it is in that information just because of um at the next March meeting.
So that's the next step. So having that discussion and then the city manager will take the feedback from the commission, the chairs, and then go back to the council with a proposal in terms of how to harmonize the commissions and potentially reduce the number of commissions, which is still clearly on the table right now. Any other? Do you want to add anything, Don? Because I know you.
I think he did a good job on that.
I think there's also a discussion about just potentially reducing commissioners.
Yeah, there was a discussion about the number of commissioners per commission as well. That's correct. There was that as well.
Hey, is it potentially that it's it's solely the chair or can it be the chair and vice chair? Is there a way to, I I they don't want to tilt windmills here, but is there a way to potentially request that the chair and vice chair?
Thank you. And I think it's fair to know that.
Uh, I'm not sure it's going back on the twenty eighth. Yeah, it's kind of one after the other. That I'm not going to give the city manager much time to put that together and go back to the council. Um, okay, so anyway, so that's that's the that's the process. Um. Yeah, I think that's that's all I have about that that meeting. I mean, there was a lot, obviously, between the priorities and between the commission. But um, you know, I think we all should be aware that things are, you know, things will be changed um with regards to commission. So it's 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 a matter for us to give appropriate feedback to staff and particularly the city managers so that we feel comfortable with what's presented to the council uh March twenty eighth.
I'll continue on if you want to.
Yes.
I'll continue on season one of this this saga because it was it was brought up also in the the meeting of the twenty eighth. And basically, there was a discussion about whether or not the the appointment process for new uh commissioners should be uh grouped, I think it was in August of the coming year, or or what time of year they would be done. And there's this discussion around, well, some of the there's some openings now, and so it has to be in flux. And and that decision as to when commission appointments would be made was spilled back into these recommendations. It's going to come from council, or come from staff to council, back to council. So uh the timing of a commission appointments is in that mix as well. And the other thing that they did regarding the commissions and and maybe staff can help me here, but I believe they they collapsed a a subcommittee at that, a sub-commission into.
They get rid of one or two because of the housing element?
Yeah, they I think they they made a motion at that to to combine two of the commissions at that meeting, and that was that was it.
I think they made a formal decision at the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it was a consent calendar item that was pulled with consent and then discussed and then.
Oh, it's at the twenty first meeting. Is that was at the twenty first or at the following meeting?
This was at the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, okay, yeah.
It was it was a consent calendar item that was pulled, discussed, and then it was passed. I think that that combined two commissions.
Yeah, I think there was a discussion on the twenty first of combining the design review commission with the planning commission. So I guess the decision was made then.
Um, then the only other thing that note that's probably of some interest here is um the sewer rate study has been completed. And the council authorized um staff and to go out and uh uh to proceed with the the two eighteen notice on the revised sewer rates for San Diego. So that's a process that I I think will be on a ballot here in near future about the rates. Rates that it's the rate study was completed, and now they had to try and convince the public that it's a good idea to raise your sewer rates. That's all I have.
I know this is not a discussion I have, but no, it's not, but given the timeframe for the new chair to meet with the city manager, um it would be appropriate to I don't know, I would just say that if if the person is going to be meeting with the city manager, maybe can meet with commissioners if he or she wants input about what individual commissioners deal.
The the chair should definitely get input from uh from the commissioners. Um, I think, you know, it can be done now, or it can be done one-on-one, but I think we can we can also do it now. Um, I just wanted to go through the this before we come back to that and have some kind of a discussion around it, if that's okay.
It's the
Anything else?
No.
Any other comments? So I have I have some more comments, actually. Um, so some updates. Uh, but first, I wanted to let you know that on March twenty eighth also, um no, okay, so um, yeah, so tomorrow, the gas power leaf blow enforcement is going to be discussed. So we've talked about that already, so I'm not going to go um. Either if you want to make a comment, uh as a member of the public, you should feel free to make a comment as a member of the public. Um. On March twenty eighth, I wanted to mention that also specifically. The council will be discussing the permanent outdoor dining proposal. Um, one of the things that will be, assuming discussed, is whether um the use of gas heaters would be permitted outside. Um, we don't have time as a commission to come up with a proper recommendation because we're not going to have a meeting, you know, before that. There was, you know, we had not discussed that at the previous meeting to put it on the agenda, therefore, we can't really discuss it. But I just wanted to let you know that on March twenty eighth, that's going to be discussed as a member of the public. As a member of the public, you can make a comment or you can send an email if you have an opinion about the use of gas heaters for the permanent outdoor dining program. Um, I will make a comment. Um, but I mean, I should, you know, you should feel free to make a comment as well. Um, and I will make a comment not on behalf of the commission, but just as a, as a member of the, of the, of. Um, additional um updates. So we've had a meeting with Block Power. Block Power came to this commission, make a, made a presentation about their services, what they can do for Los Santos, what they currently doing from, uh, with other cities, including San Jose and including Menlo Park and San Mr. Bistro and some other city. Um. Staff and I, so it's with Casey and Tanya and I met with Mountain View two or three weeks ago, I think at least. Um, because Mountain View contacted us because they're looking into using block power as well to accelerate electrification in Mountain View. So as a follow-up, uh, we decided to have a meeting with them, with Mountain View, to discuss what they're planning to do and see if there, and start the discussion, see if there is any way we can work with them rather than working independently and get, put something together with Block Power. So that meeting took place. Um, we left the meeting um with the agreement that we would keep in touch on what we're doing. I think Mountain, Mountain View is moving forward with this. I mean, clearly, um, us internally in Los Santos, we're not necessarily moving forward with it because of staff limitations at this time, but that's something definitely that's still on our radar. Um, I should add that on Wednesday, so two days from now, you're meeting also, right? Laura and I will be meeting with Block Power again um to have discussions about next step. Um. And one of the things that um will come up is the discussion they're having with Mountain View and, you know, maybe explore some ideas in terms of how, not, how receptive our power would be to us working with Mountain View, come up with a single proposal to. Would be another option. Uh, and I, and I think um probably the near future, I think it might be a good idea to get Block Power back to the commission and have a discussion of what, about what some kind of an agreement with Block Power could look like. Um, but I don't know if it's, you know, it's gonna have to be also coordinated with staff and feel, you know, how we can move. That's right now, we are all in some ways because we need to have, uh, you know, we need to pass the rich goes, there are other stuff that staff is working on, and they don't have the manpower to work on things like that, but um, I think something we should keep on our radar. I, I have, I've, I've kept the the discussion line open with Block Power and I'm trying to keep them kind of interested involved and so on, so we don't, we don't lose, we don't lose that connection. And obviously, they are, they are interested. They want to increase significantly the number of cities they work with. So it's playing in our favor in some way.
Can, can you at least outline in a, like, three-point fashion, like, how, what our relationship would be with Block Power, how they would?
So, uh, right, so what we had discussed, so what Block Power does, they provide services to accelerate building electrification.
I mean, like a finance company, right?
No, 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 it's, it's a service company, really. It's a, it's a, it's a building electrification service company. And they can potentially, as part of the service, they can provide financing for buying pumps or some building solar panels or whatever. They have relationship with some financial services firms that we allow, that allows them to potentially propose that to customers as another option as part of the package. But what they do is that um, they go, basically, they identify homes or buildings that would benefit from electrification. And then they propose a plan, they have, they, they put you in touch with a contractor or several contractors, give you a bid, they actually provide you financial services, they help you with rebates and discounts you can get from the state or you can get from the county or from the city or whatever. So um. What we've been discussing with them is to potentially do a pilot. Pilot being, we um sign an agreement with Block City to provide their services to help us electrify twenty, fifty, whatever, residence or building over to a two-year period or a specific price. Right? So, so that's, that's the kind of discussion that has taken place. I can tell you that they have a pilot right now that's ongoing in San Jose. And it's a big city, so the pilot is to electrify two hundred buildings, I believe, in San Jose over a two or three-year period, so.
San Jose city buildings or, or?
No, no, San Jose. Multi-family housing. And it, it, I don't know exactly, I, I have all the documents, but I haven't looked at the details, but mostly focusing on multi-family housing, bigger buildings, greater impact. But for the Los Santos, we have mostly single-family homes. Doesn't mean we, we exclude buildings, but that's, that's probably where the, you know, most of the work is. Um, Mountain View is looking at actually doing a pilot with Block Power, specifically looking at buildings, not necessarily looking at single homes. So it's a, they are also are focusing, they're also focusing on, on, on multi-family housing, building.
Oh, I was just gonna say that um that we shouldn't be discussing, having a discussion right now. Yeah, sorry. Um.
Yeah, just, okay, so anyway, that's, that's what they're doing. Um. More to come, uh, it's a timing issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Okay, the other thing I need to mention, uh, I met with Cool City. So I don't know if you know of Cool City and the Cool City Challenge. Um, is managed, the founder is a guy named David Gerson. Um, what they're doing, what they're trying to do is pretty much doing the same thing that, um, you know, a block power will do, not, not exactly actually, but more like a community climate solutions would do. Remember, they came to the commission and presented their services. So the Cool Cities Challenge is trying to get sign up a hundred cities to be carbon neutral by two thousand thirty. That's, that's the Cool City Challenge that they're pushing right now. Um, they, in the past, they've done pilots with some cities, including Palo Alto. Um, and the, the pilots were about the block city, what they call the, 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 the cool blocks, sorry, the cool blocks. The cool blocks is neighbors coming together to try to work together to electrify theirs. Right? They've done that in Palo Alto, they've done that in some other cities, at King Santa Rosa was another one. And they were doing that to understand the mechanism and, and, and kind of, you know, it was a trial type of thing. Nowadays, the process of trying to sign cities. Um. They're not going to sign Palo Alto, they're not going to sign many of the cities that they've done pilots with, that is what I was told. Uh, but they're loo- looking at other cities that would be willing to basically meet that city challenge of the one hundred cool city challenge. Um, they are, they are looking at cities of fifty thousand inhabitants or more, so technically, Los Santos would be, would not be able to be part of that challenge, but um from the discussion that I, I had with him, I sent him the cap, he reviewed the cap and he said, well, I mean, we're not off the table, that's something we wanted to do. But, um, you know, that would be something a little, that goes a little bit beyond everything we've talked about until now. Um, so I'm not going to go into the specifics with about this. I need to understand a little bit how that works. And I need to have some other, we need to have some other discussions at the commission level with staff and so on. But that's another option that I've been exploring in terms of accelerating building electrification for us in general, but in that case, we'd go a little bit beyond just building electrification. Okay, uh, that's it, that's all I have. Any other reports, comments from other commissioners? Okay, uh, potential future agenda items. Um. So, Tanya, you have, you have. So I, I think what I want to do, just to clarify, um, Tanya is gonna go over some of the things we've discussed as a commission, as potential future agenda items. I'd like us to decide what we want from next, next meeting, if possible, because I think we have to agree on that to present the agenda as current, the way that, the way it works now. So we're gonna go through that and try to prioritize some agenda items for next meeting.
So I'll read off the potential agenda items that we've had and then. Just the addition. Um, so the current potential are um the S V C E tariff on bill program, the um shoulder improvement update, um, the work plan for twenty-three and twenty-four, and then uh gas heaters, which I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, yeah. So I had the EV fair, we talked about that as a potential agenda item from next, what else?
Probably at the commissioner booth, part of that.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, maybe the broader.
Yeah, just for the update and discussion at the commission around the EV fair. The shoulder improvement is SU uh twenty, that's the one that was brought up actually by a member of the public once, the, our commissions meeting, so um. So these are things that could potentially come back.
Do you ask for an update on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea there was to get an update on how it's going. So understand that that's a two thousand twenty ordinance, I believe, I think two thousand nineteen.
It was, it was before twenty twenty, it was like.
Yeah, it was before, before the COVID, it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. So I think the idea there would be to have someone from the department, maybe it's building department, that would be able to come back, come to the commission and give us feedback on how this is working. Because I think it's since it's been in place for now, three or four, at least four years, uh, the idea is that it would be useful for the commission to hear back from the building department, see how it works, see if there are any things we need to potentially think about in terms of modifying the ordinance to make it better, easier, whatever. I think that's, that was the idea.
The engineering department.
Engineering, okay. Yeah, I don't know if it's building or engineering, yeah. Work plan, I think the work plan, the question mark around the work plan, I think is, I think we should have discussions about what we want to focus on this year, but I don't think we can have a work plan until something is. I mean, we have, there is, there is the definition of what the commissions would be doing, I guess, right? I don't know, I don't know if there is any direction with regard to the work plan this year, any timeline.
I think that's gonna be discussed with the manager and the chair on, on March twenty-third.
Joint Commission Council meeting will still be in May.
The joint commission?
We annually have a meeting with the council, the, uh, all commissions have, meet with the council and talk about progress over the past year and work plan for the coming year and get kind of some um feedback. We generally start working on our list of accomplishments. Um, like next meeting, would, we would wanna start working on that. So it'd be useful to know if that's happening in May and whether we should agendaize having a, a discussion around what we want to include in, in that report.
So that's gonna be discussed at the twenty-eighth meeting.
I, I, I think, uh, I, I would be supportive of putting it as an agenda item, at least for staff to update us on where it stands and if there is gonna be a. But, you know, every year, we've done a, a report of what we've done the past year and also setting the agenda for the following year, but I understand that staff may be coming back with some additional direction on how to set the agenda for the next year. But uh I think that it's appropriate to have it on the, on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can work on it, because if we don't have it on the agenda, then, then it's May and.
Yeah.
Well, it's that, and, 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 you know, that's happened a couple of times during COVID that really didn't, we didn't have an opportunity as a commission to, to discuss it. And so I, uh, I think I was a chair during one of those years and basically I, I put together a report and just forwarded it as the chair, not representing the entire commission. But I think it'd be better to try and get an agenda so it can be discussed.
Last year was kind of, we worked together, Laura and I, to put it together, the presentation as well as the, the report. Again, there was no, there was a discussion of the work plan last year. Not necessarily a discussion of the accomplishment, I think what that should be.
Yeah, accomplishments more, just go into the report and then, yeah, then it's far about.
But just for, you know, just for staff, because I know you knew you didn't, you've never been through that process. We used to meet, I mean, we, up until now, we've been meeting with the council every year. We have each commission has half an hour with the council to review the accomplishments from the past year and discuss the work plan for the following year. So the work plan that we had was presented in May last year uh to the council and was not formally approved, but was not, was, was okayed by the council. And that's kind of the process that was in place and running now. I understand that things are changing, that may change, so we'll have these discussions. But I think let's plan to have the EV fair for sure and the, and the work plan next, for next meeting.
To reiterate, the goal of right now is just to put potential future agenda items on the, like, the list so that we could vote for them to be on a future, so DAP would work with the chair on when to decide this.
This is just a list of everything, but not.
So that it can be, yeah, so it can be approved by everyone on the commission.
For the next meeting.
No, just in general.
Or the list of, the, just the whole list.
The whole list of everything.
My understanding was that we had to talk about the next meeting agenda items, review the list we have and then agree on what goes on to the, the, the next commission's meeting.
So we're putting potential future agenda items on the list to be approved by all commissioners? And then DAP leaves on and Chair decide when those approved potential agenda items can go on a, for a future meeting.
So it's not necessarily just next.
Correct.
But, yeah, but how far, like, how are we gonna do this every meeting? Like, I don't, I mean, I can't say what. Like, everything we might wanna discuss this year, then it's a much bigger bucket list, but, or is it just within the next few months?
Yeah, I would say items that are talked about in the next few months. I think it's just also if we're getting um potential agenda items listed or, or sent to us via email or one-on-one. Um, we need to make all the commission aware of what is being asked to be put on potential future agenda item.
So like, would we wanna put, like, do we need to put block power on there?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say.
That would speak about it on that one last, on the last.
It's already on there.
Single-use plastics, do we need to put that back on or?
It's been, it's basically in the work plan, right?
That's not gonna work, yeah.
So we can go through it with the work plan as part of a work plan discussion. So it's more about what's, yeah, additional things. Um, there is one thing that we'd like to add, if the commission, if the other commissioners are okay with that. I'd like the, again, I don't know if it's building, planning, department, whatever it is, but I want someone to, from the city to come to the commission and talk to us and present and, and tell us how the permitting process is done right now in Los Santos for heat pumps, solar panels and batteries. Would you, would you guys want to see that? Okay, so we add that as well. And that doesn't mean next meeting, but.
And, and list out all the ones we've seen and then we can take a, a vote on it at the end.
And in particular, as a. And in particular, as it relates to the regulation of public power. Solar permitting.
Yeah, the problem is that it's not clear what, I mean, the the state is still working on the finalization of those regulations and I don't think we're gonna get a clear answer until the summer. For the state.
Uh, yeah, I don't know how.
Any wise?
But but there's the, for cities over fifty thousand, I think, believe it's beginning this year, they have to have this all online solar permitting. And then I um, I think we come online two years later where where our will have to have online permitting.
For us, as a city, is two thousand twenty four.
Yeah.
Because it's less than fifty thousand people. Yes, next year.
Uh, so anyway, whatever that, yeah, so that might be rolled into that, yeah.
We wanna just, just a quick gas leak report then, in case there's something to react to beyond just what I have to report from the meeting. Just in case there's some follow up that would be.
But we can still do informational, I, that would just be an informational item.
I'm just, you can put it on the list of things so that when if the chair says, oh, this is something we actually should discuss more, at least there is an option.
Yeah, I don't expect there to be more to talk about, but it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Any other ideas? I mean, obviously, every meeting will be removing or adding items, so it's not like, yeah, to decide on everything today, but it's a, again, it's a long process. Things change, obviously. We'll adjust the change. Okay.
So we have S V C E tariff on bill program. Um, solar permitting process as an informational update of the um, shoulder improvement, um, also informational update. Um. The staff would have to check in on that and get back um, to the chair and then um, the work plan for twenty three, twenty four. Um, and then, so the E V fair is something that staff will present on when they have information, so um, leave that one off. So there's one, two, three, four items.
You have, you mentioned block power.
Block power is already approved.
It's already approved, okay. So it's basically S V C tariff on bill program, the shoulder improvement update, the permitting process for heat pumps and solar and battery, as well as plans for the city to comply with the state, right, with regards to on the online permitting process for solar. Uh, I don't, maybe it's gonna be a two step. Okay.
Permit and and also.
And the work plan.
Um. Yes. So anyone in favor of, or all commissioners in favor of those for for agenda item, uh, potential future agenda items? Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Anyone not in favor? Um. Would commissioners also like to add um, the flowers, gas leak flowers on uh, potential future agenda item?
I'm confused, I mean, it is on our work plan.
Yeah, but we didn't really do anything on it, right? We had decided to table it in some ways and we did something for uh, printout, right? So I mean, do, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I I I just am confused whether we need to have it agenda, you know, have it in this approved list if it's already on our work plan, but fine to put it on.
Do you think it needs to be there?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Do all commissioners approve of adding uh, gas flowers to a potential future agenda item?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody in favor? What's that then?
Okay, so I think we're done with the agenda items, right?
Um. We do have our lots of potential items. A new collection.
All right, so every year we elect the chair and the vice chair, obviously, it's uh, so the idea is per the the commission handbook, the election should be, should take place in March. So that at the end of the March meeting, so that for the April meeting, the new chair and the new vice chair are in charge of that meeting. Uh, I think, timing wise, that's that's the way it should be every year. So proposals for our chair, for our chair for next year.
I'll jump in, I guess, and offer a couple of comments and then and maybe a proposal. Um. Oh, we, we elected Bruno, I think, in June and he took the chair. And Tom, in June, sorry, no, it's good Tom, in June and uh, I guess their first meeting was was uh, July and then I think we missed a couple of meetings and I think uh, Tanya, you and Casey didn't come on board until roughly the October meeting. And so, you know, we, there hasn't been a long history of of getting things rolling, if you will. And um and for that reason, especially with the upcoming discussions with staff on the formation of the commission, you know, I think my opinion is that I'd like to see Bruno continue because he has the education and background to represent uh the commission well during those discussions and um, that was another reason for my, also my query uh, about whether or not not only the chair but the vice chair could could uh, attend those meetings to to again, provide continuity and and education within the commission that we have so that we can, we can function uh you know, as 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 these changes occur, so my proposal would be to reelect uh, Bruno as the chair and and Tom Heck as the vice chair for the coming year.
Okay, so we will take um nominations for chair first. Then, so uh, we have one nomination from uh, Commissioner Whedon for Bruno, are there any other actions? So, I can.
But I guess we have to get consensus. Well, look, um, yeah, thank you, first of all, obviously, uh, for the confidence of your confidence, Don, and and hopefully the confidence of the commission, but yeah, I'm happy to serve another year, obviously, if that's if that's what the commission wants to do. Um. And I know things are changing, you know, we have new staff and, you know, I think um uh, it would make sense to do that, do it this way, but, you know, I think we've been around for a while. So I'm happy to continue as your chair if that's what you want to do.
I'll second the nomination, yeah.
Great, so um uh, let's take a vote. Um, so let's take a vote on reelecting um Chair Dellenew as chair for till March twenty twenty four. Um. Commissioner Texler? Uh, Commissioner Whedon? Commissioner Heck?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Manries?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lu?
Yes.
I think we have um six in favor and one absent.
I think you have five in favor.
Sorry. Yes, five minus. Chair Dellenew. Um. Five in favor, one abstain and one absent. Um. So let the record show that uh, Chair Dellenew will be um, continue to be chair for till March twenty twenty four. Now we'll take nominations for vice chair.
I guess I'll continue to play.
Yes, as the floor is rolling.
So I'd like to, assuming that um, Commissioner Heck would, or Vice Chair Heck, should say, would continue to like to continue in that role, I'd like to, I propose to nominate him as the vice chair. And I'd also like to reiterate, I'd like to encourage that both um, Tom and Bruno um, represent the environmental commission with with the staff meeting. That's a side like that's in addition to the.
But I think it's up to either, right, to another discussion with the.
He managers, just the chair, director of the department and then the A S M. Me, so that's that direction. Great, um, any other nomination? Okay, let's take a vote, um, take a vote for or, yeah, do you, do you?
Oh, it's that, yes.
Um. Um, so let's take a vote for Vice Chair Heck to continue um, as vice chair until March twenty twenty four. Um, Commissioner Texler?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Whedon? Uh, Chair Dellenew?
Yes.
Commissioner Manries?
Yes.
Commissioner Lu?
Yes.
Okay, the the record show um five commissioners in in favor and um, one abstain and one absent. And Vice Chair, Vice Chair for March twenty twenty four is Vice Chair Heck.
Congratulations. Um, okay, the the meeting is, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to let you know that I'm going to get in touch with every one of you about the meeting that will be coming up next, uh, next week. Twenty third is next week.
Uh, true.
Yeah, okay. So you leave me your cell phone number, each of you, so I can get in touch with you easily. At the end of this meeting, thank you very much, that's the, my joining the meeting, uh, the March meeting of the Environmental Commission at nine o'clock, nine oh two.
Nine oh four. I'm a new tenor.